I'd like to call an order and request roll call, please.
Alex?
Here.
The girls?
Here.
Brethauer?
Carpenter?
Here.
Your mayor?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
State.
Here, thank you. Item three is community input. This allows members of the public to talk the board. Anybody want to talk the board right now? Or you're all here for the next item, right? So takes us to item four, discussion of possible action regarding possible development on the east side of Highway 14. There's a note that town of Rutland officials and property owners on the east side of 14 were notified of tonight's meeting. I would note that this is listed for possible action. There's no rush on this. I've talked to staff some and we're thinking we'll probably more discuss, ask questions tonight and then move this down just a bit to have action at some point in the future unless we feel we're really, really ready tonight. So item A is a presentation by village engineer Jason Leetha on the report Southeast Development Area Sewer Service Analysis. So Jason, welcome. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to just basically go through a little bit of the report. Hopefully, you've had a chance to glance at it in your packet. Just so everybody knows, I am the first one, I think, that is the guinea pig to use the monitor up here. So I'll try my best to maneuver around it hopefully with no issues. But I just mainly wanted to put some maps up there so we can kind of look at it and talk about it a little bit. So I might move around here with the mic. But so, thank you for having me tonight. I want to just kind of go back through and summarize the report and kind of the basis of what we did and why we looked at what we did and the new information that kind of as a result came out of that report. So this is the, basically looking at the service area east of 14 and approximately north and south of 138. And so we're kind of looking at the service area out there. Now, those of you who have been here know that this report's been around. It's been looked at in the past as far as what are costs to two things. A, get utilities out to that area across under 14. And then once they're out there, you know, what are costs to develop and expand those utilities out on that side of 14? The difference in why we looked at it this time was we looked at some alternatives. And primarily, we updated information from the 2011 study, which is the last time this was really reviewed. But we also looked at some alternatives for the sanitary sewer. And again, this is called the sewer study really because we focused in on some options or alternatives to sewer. So if you look at the map over here, I'm just going to kind of scroll here real slow. And said, if we looked at these different options, would there be increased area that we could serve? Would there be changes? Land or take out some land? And so if you look at it, kind of the brown line on here, that's really the boundary or the limits of what the original study had. And that's kind of the constraints of what we stayed within. Just for reference, grab the mic here and wander a bit. So if we're looking at the drawing here, just for reference, this is 14 kind of running. Through here. This is the treatment plant that sits up in this corner of the drawing. I mentioned as I scroll down here. To the south, a lot of this land is not in the village. Is the Hofer Farms development. I know that's just kind of been recently being discussed and there's some development occurring over there. So you can see ultimately form of radian type of development. But what we're going to focus on tonight, and I'm going to zoom in here a little bit, is really getting from the treatment plant to the east side of 16. We assume that, again, all the costs to develop once over there are very similar. So that would be roads, storm water, water main, gravity sewer within those areas. But from A to B, the one thing that we looked at were a couple of things. One was some changes that have occurred since the last study were, there were, there were changes to flood plains. There was a model that was more recently updated by the DNR and approved for the Badfish Creek Tributary. And so that changed a little bit of the area there that is developable versus what it was prior. The other thing was there's some different wetland mapping available now that has some different areas that were shown from what was previously done. So we kind of took that into account to look at what area could be developable once we got across 14 and what type of sewer flows that would generate. Because again, knowing those flows has kind of an impact on how we can service that. What size of. Stations we need. And so that first part of the study was really go back and look at what's really changed. The other part of the study was to kind of look at these sewer alternatives. The original report just looked at providing a deep, large interceptor gravity sewer across from the treatment plant to the east side of 14. The thing with that is we do know that there's obviously some additional information now that we have from constructing South Perry Parkway on the west side of 14. We have some soil borings. We have some better ideas of groundwater elevations. And so we, you know, we have some, some additional information there that helps us kind of look at costs and constructability for a deep sewer through that area. One of the things that we did consider now this time around was a lift station. Historically, the village hasn't considered, well, what would a lift station cost? How could it be developed? And what would be the, you know, impacts or the pros and cons of pumping that sewage? The, the thing about lift stations nowadays versus say five, 10, 15 years ago are there's a lot better technology in pumps, the equipment. Those pumps can obviously run better. They, they have less downtime. They don't get clogged as easily. The other things with lift stations to keep in mind nowadays is generally backup generation is much more reliable. It's much more cost effective. You have a lift station operating out there. You have a power outage or something. Your generator kicks on. They're able to obviously support the flow even in those downtimes. And the last thing with, with lift stations, I think that, that really is becoming more appealing is they're all connected in with SCADA to the, to the controls and the treatment plant. So again, it gives the functionality of a lift station a lot better. I guess pro, if you will, when you're comparing it to a gravity sewer. So knowing that we looked at these service areas, we went back and reviewed and we came up with some land values. We went back and looked at, could we be using a lift station to service this? And really, the main focus again is from this letter A to the letter B on the screen over here on your maps. That's about a half a mile service. So we, we really kind of looked at how would we serve and get sewage across that half a mile? And so we looked at what the flows would be. And we did make an adjustment on flows from the previous study. We felt like the commercial industrial flows were slightly low. That was really kind of based on some conversation with staff. It was also based off of some new numbers that Carp C. and Madison Met are using and calculating their flows and capacities. So we did increase that a little bit. But I don't think it was significant enough to make a difference in the capacity of the original analysis for the, for the gravity sewer. But it was important to know how much flow we're getting in a peak condition for our pump station. And really, doing a preliminary sizing of the pump station really is what we need to do to generate or get a cost so we can kind of compare apples to apples. So basically, what we did was we looked at net developable acreage across this area. We also took out obviously the wetlands and the flood plains. And then lastly, what we arrived at was kind of a, a net area. We also applied a 70% to that remaining land area in the report. What that really meant was we took out, we made the assumption that 30% of this remaining land area that doesn't have wetlands or flood plains would have roadways, would need stormwater, treatment areas and some other factors that, that, you know, as general land practice development tells us, it's about 70%. And that really gets us to the number that we need to generate flows. So once we generated those, then we looked at the three alternatives. So we went back and looked at the gravity sewer and said, it was the original assumption of a 24-inch, very deep at a very flat grade, still viable. And it was for this area. Then we also looked at a lift station. When we looked at the lift station, what we arrived at essentially were two options. Initially, we thought because as this area develops, the initial flows will be fairly low. Say, you know, so many, the first few acres come on, you know, maybe a site develops eight, 10, 12 acres, maybe a 20 acre site. We have to be able to design the lift station so it can function day one. And we can still force or pump the sewage through the force main to the plant. But we also have to be able to have that lift station expandable as it develops so we can pump more sewage across with, with the development occurring. And so when we initially looked at the lift station option, we looked at expanding or kind of building in expandability to the lift station. So day one, we'd put in a much larger wet well than maybe we would need with, with building it so it could be controlled or added on without rebuilding or reconstructing a larger lift station down the line. So that, that expandability or functionality was built into it. As we got further into looking at these options, the one thing that we realized was when we looked at servicing this area, we kind of focused on what we call phase one and phase two. And that was, there was some net acreage. And that's essentially all the lands north and south of 138 as you had east. And there was some acreage in there. The net developable was about 186 acres. Area that you see defined here. And what we realized was a lot of that. Development. And if we designed a lift station for just that, with the assumption that that may take 15 to 20 years to develop all that land and generate. That as we'd be at a point where we'd really be at a flow where we'd have to look at capacity of the existing plant before we would add any more. And we also have to look at what we'd have to do to add all these larger areas in, which are going to generate significantly larger flows. And so the idea there was that technology could change. There could be changes in how you guys treat your sewage. There could be regionalization. There could be a lot of things going on here. So it's a little hard to look at down the road and really know, you know, maybe at some point down the road it even makes sense to put a gravity sewer in at a later date. But initially, to kind of get this area into the system to start servicing it, we could serve it much cheaper with a lift station that just focused on this purple area, this net 186 acres. And so the report really then kind of looked at that as an option as well. As we didn't want to just, you know, look at the lift station. Because building a lift station initially that's expandable to service the entire area out there is, it was very expensive. Plus, there's a lot of upgrades. So when we initially designed the force main to service the flow day one, we'd be looking at a small force main, say six inch diameter to pump the sewage back. As that would expand, that force main would, would ultimately be increased significantly. And I think the report indicated in here that we would end up with it kind of the midpoint, we'd end up with two force mains. We'd have to add a second one for the additional sewage we're pumping. Then ultimately, if we developed the entire area, we'd have to have two large force mains pumping back. So again, as this incrementally came aboard, we'd have to increase those, those costs. And without knowing what timeframe that would develop, it could be significantly far out in the future. We kind of felt like we should just look at, well, what, what were the costs to develop the initial land area? So after we looked at those three alternatives, we really came to the, the final numbers. And again, I'll go back over here so we can look at from A to B, which is kind of the main focus here. Back and. Assumptions based off of the new information we have. We updated the numbers to current numbers and we were at about $2.2 million for that construction to get sewer across there. Now, keep in mind, again, once that sewer is in place, you know, it has the capacity to serve a much larger area. But again, it's very expensive to put that in upfront. And I think that was really kind of always the hesitation in the past was this big cost upfront to do that. If we look at just the, the lift station option where we want to put in a larger lift station that can be expanded as the area grows, we were at about $1.4 million. So again, significantly less to pump it. Now, there are pros and cons again with the lift station that we talked about. There's operating costs. There's electricity. There's potential gas for backup generation. But again, when you factor in all that and look at a net present value, it still comes out less than the gravity sewer. So again, keeping that in mind, your operational costs are long-term, but you know, are still small on the scale of what the gravity sewer costs. And then if we look just at servicing this initial pink area or this 186 acres, we looked at the lift station and sizing it just for that and not being larger or expandable. We were about $968,000. So again, it was significantly less than the larger lift station component to this. And so really, what we kind of came to a recommendation in our report was we said, you know, it's up, it's up to the village. But certainly looking at feasibility of what you can service, what the initial flows are and what the costs are, it really seems to point to putting in a station that can serve this initial corridor, this, this net 186 acres of developable. We do really, at least talking to the planner and Mike here, we do believe that, you know, that would give you a good duration of time out into the future where it could be 15, 20 years. And really, we don't know what's going to change as far as costs, as far as operations, you know, technology. There could be other things that might come into play here. But again, we, we came to the conclusion that this force main would be much shallower. It would be much less expensive. We could directional drill it. We don't have to deal with the environmental permitting situation that we would have to do if we were open cutting or digging in a gravity sewer. So there's a lot of things that, that really kind of lend itself to make this more appealing than the gravity option. So that's what I had for you tonight. I know I hit some highlights. I know I kind of went through it fairly quickly. I'm sure you have questions. I'd be more than happy to try and answer if you have anything for me.
Yeah, Jerry, go ahead.
Yes, thanks. That was very informative, by the way. So the lift station is going to be expandable from what? To service the whole area eventually, right?
The recommendation that we put in was to build the initial lift station to serve the 186 acres. So that wouldn't, it, it could be expanded, but it would be a higher cost at a later date. If we, if we build it day one with a bigger wet well and, and a bigger footprint, then it's less cost down the road. So there's, there's kind of a trade-off. You either pay a little more upfront to make it a little easier to expand or you put in the smaller lift station and just focus on serving that initial area.
Okay, well, I think, I guess, it makes sense to me. But again, I don't know that much about engineering sewer plants to, to have expandability if we decide to pursue this. But when I look at the Exhibit C and look at the entire costs of Phase One, we're looking at almost $4 million. Correct? Am I looking at that correctly?
That's for Phase Two total.
This is the back of ours.
It's the very back of the package tonight.
Yeah. Oh, for the gravity sewer, you mean?
Um, no. This, this is a lift station, Option Two.
Last page of the report.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So it's at $4 million. What does a, what does a sewer plant cost? I mean, I hear you laugh. I have no idea. When I see $4 million, it makes me ask, are we, you know?
A wastewater treatment plant, if we were to build a standalone plant today, would be $50 to $100 million.
So, okay.
Don't you think, I mean, in that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assumption. The other thing to, to note here is that, and I actually, I just checked before we started this. You have 1,500 acres of potential development in this study. This, this study at peak flow would generate about 4 million gallons a day. Your current plan is, is capacity is less than that.
Yeah.
And so if you really put it into perspective, by the time you would start looking at developing all this land down the road in the future, you'd really have to address a significant need at the plant too, which would obviously weigh in a lot of decisions. And that's kind of why we focus more on how could we serve this area? How could we put development out there short-term? Because there's not just the cost for the infrastructure in this. There's also, you're right, it's the plant side to treat all of it. Now, serving these initial phases, your plant would have capacity.
Right.
To do that. But, you know, obviously, when you start getting these bigger numbers in these future phases and you start adding more service area here, it gets very expensive.
So what percentage of capacity is the current plant?
We're at about 60 to 70% of capacity.
60 to 70?
Yeah, we, we still have, we still have a considerable amount of growth in the plant. You know, that's why we're able to take on projects like Forward and Ridge View, the Hofer Development. Kind of to, to, what has kind of brought this back to the surface? You know, in the past year, we've had considerable amount of interest and activity again on the east side of the 14 and 138 area over there.
Right.
So that kind of caused us to take a look at, and honestly, and we're also kind of, we're kind of fixed for where we can grow with Pittsburgh being to our north neighbor and, and not a lot of commercial occurring out in the, the west side. This is kind of where we have flagged as the growth area. So, you know, with, with the activity there, that's when we were saying, well, let's, let's take a look at this because we knew it was going to be very expensive to get gravity sewer over there. You know, we were kind of thinking, I'll bet you it is cheaper to look at it from a pressure and force main pump station type of alternative. And that's really kind of what drove this, this reevaluation, if you will. You know, I think what, what the takeaway, what we would like to take away from this to be is we have better numbers now and we have, I think, a, a, I don't want to say cheaper alternative because that makes it sound like it's a less, less favorable alternative. It's really however you want to look at it. But I think a good alternative to start looking at what are the costs associated with actually opening this area up for future development.
And when you, when you say future development, I assume that we're talking a priority on business development? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
What, do you have any kind of an estimate, Mike, on what the return on the investment to the village is?
We did a detailed analysis when we initially looked at using gravity sewer here. That was before Jeff came onto the staff. And we had trouble making this initial Phase One development that Jason's talking about cash flow towards the buildout of, of the crosshatched area. It was approaching break even. But not until we continued development farther to the south and the southeast did we have enough tax base to make the cash flow of the property demonstrated, you know, clearly as, as more of a sure bet. So it was those upfront costs. And, and the main upfront cost we were struggling with to get cash flow was that the cost of that mileage from the current plant to the east side of 14, we have no taxable property in there because it's not developable. And so reducing that initial upfront cost was the best chance that we had to get this to be more of a sure thing. And really, the, the, the main way we could get that was by using the lift station alternative. So we haven't run the numbers yet to see what the break even year would be. We know it'll be sooner in time. But I think one of the decision items on tonight's agenda would be to authorize my staff to run the discounted cash flow analysis to see what our payback period would be reduced to.
And when you talk about further south, are you still inside that purple hatched area? Or are you pushing outside of that in your mind?
No, if you could pan so we get, there you go, now go south. So the break even point under the previous analysis was when we got down to about the back of the homes on Hill Road.
It's on D or E there, right?
Right. And it, it took that amount of development to really get us over. Significant reduction will cash flow in the, the pink area if we rerun the analysis.
Thanks.
What thoughts, Mike, do you have on the speed at which that area might develop?
Excuse me just a second. For people watching, Mike is Mike Slavney, our planner from Vandoval, just so people on TV will know. I'm not sure what the name takes, sir.
Says Lisa.
So if you're wrong, Lisa gets blamed.
I'll answer to either. Well, when we initially did the development assumptions for the pink area, we were thinking 15 to 20 years for the buildout of that area. So it's, you know, it's a good sized area. It's, it's slower absorption there than what we would see, say, right now in Sun Prairie or, or Middleton. And it's still a, a pretty modest pace of development compared to some of the other parts of the county. So we thought we were being, if anything, conservative with that pace of development assumption.
Thank you.
And that timeframe is very good to consider when, when you look at what your options are if you're going with a pumping station. So if it's in a 15 to 20-year span, you know, pump station, you should be able to use for 25, 30 years, but it'll take upgrades at that 15 to 20-year time period. So, you know, if you look at the time value money and, and kind of your initial investment, if, if, if the desire is that we want to go into this area and we want to start developing it, you know, that pump station that could be just for that area could probably easily have a lifespan that's well into the significant development of all that pink area. And then, you know, at that time, may have a much better window over what's developing over there, the densities, how things are being developed. I mean, it could be even development further to the north. You know, who knows how things expand over time and what land is acquired. But it's so hard when you're trying to lay out an area and you say, okay, let's design this pump station to be expandable over the next 50 years because we have a better idea of what's going to happen 30, 40 years from now. And it's very difficult to, to estimate that.
And I think I would add to what Jeff was saying is, you say we would be 15 years in development and we would make, we made the assumption that our peak flows are 2,500 gallons per acre per day. Let's just say we're actually constructing businesses out there where maybe the flow is 2,000 gallons per acre per day. We may be able to stretch that existing infrastructure or even upgrade just the pumps to pump more, a higher flow with what we have infrastructure. So again, I think once you get into the development, you'll see a lot more and have a much better idea of what will that initial lift station serve? You know, as far as what flows are being generated and actual numbers are being produced out there. So it, again, it's, it's, it's a lot of assumptions now. Again, we can do our best at just assuming the net developable, getting the acreages and applying the peak flows to it. But, you know, I think once we get into that, then we, you know, you'd be able to decide, when do I need to upgrade the lift station? What, you know, what does it need to be upgraded and could we stretch it further? And, you know, I think there's possibilities. I think conservatively with our peak flows and the way we, we used it, you know, I, I think, you know, we're definitely looking at sizing it conservatively for, for that area. I mean, it, it could certainly stretch a little further too.
So Mike, I've got a couple of questions that sort of feather into one another. So while this expansion increases contributions to the levy, it also increases demand for services, which puts pressure on fire and EMS, the library and municipal services, et cetera. So as I'm trying to keep all these plates spinning in my mind, and we're looking at a, at a library right now that's going to be a significant capital investment, but all of this, all of this comes out of the Capital Improvement Plan. Where do you see this kind of development falling relative to, do we save our gunpowder and build out the infrastructure now and then expand later? Or do we expand now simultaneous to building out the infrastructure? And then my last question, just because I don't know any better, is knowing that the opportunity for developers is going to be very large once we do get the sewer across 14, so it's going to be very favorable to developers? Is there any way to partner with developers to have them invest in part of this expansion as opposed to putting it all on the taxpayer?
Well, I think the, the, the first question you asked is that in, in my mind, the way the village boundaries stand now on the north side of the, the village, any kind of development that we get over here would otherwise have nowhere to go in the village. It's going to be medium and large footprint development. It wouldn't really be a good fit on the far west side of the village where we're, we have neighborhood scale employment or retail or, or entertainment. This would be in, in light industrial and, and highway oriented commercial development. And there's nowhere in the village. And there's nowhere in the village to go. And there are very few redevelopment sites of any significant size in the, in the village. We're, we're not totally built out, but all that's left is relatively expensive redevelopment sites. So the things that would come over here have no other places to land in the village and in that perspective are kind of one hundred percent captures versus anywhere else in the community. And it's initially going to tend to be employment development, so no additional demands on residential type services, the way the library would serve or a, a senior center would serve. And particularly the light industrial stuff, relatively little demand on police fire EMSs as well. So I think from a, a cash flow standpoint, it's relatively modest tax base, but also low public service demands, particularly on, on the services that take person hours to perform for the village. In terms of the, the second question, I'm going to need help remembering.
So thinking about the capital improvement plan and the different things we have going on now, and this being a pretty large investment, and now we have the library and senior center, the administrative offices, where does this fall?
Yeah, I, I, of course, that's ultimately your job. Here's how I would, would look at it. The, the library, the senior center, current demand for those things according to formulas were undersized in terms of the library and the demand is there. The, the trade off is if we don't expand over here, at some point in time, it will all be developed under county zoning in the town. It'll be very difficult to expand over there because people will have the infrastructure that they need and they'll be built. And, you know, annexation in those kinds of instances occurs on a site by site basis if somebody needs to hook up to public water or sanitary sewer because their onsite systems are no longer working. So on, on this side of town, the question is if we're going to get over there, the sooner the better because we begin, if we, if we wait, you know, a decade or two, other things will happen over there that may make it not cost effective to get across because five acres is taken out in a business that locates there, doesn't need our services or fifteen acres over here. And then it, you know, we have essentially the same infrastructure cost because we're developed, we're running water and sewer lines, but we have to bypass properties that are already developed. So here, there's more of a, kind of a strategic timing issue, whereas the, of the library and the senior center, we know we have current demand. On the other hand, that decision is, we don't have competition for, for those kinds of services. So it's, it's apples and oranges rather than apples and apples. And it's something really for, for you all to think about in terms of what the priorities should be. I didn't mean to throw it completely back in your, at your feet, but.
That's okay.
You didn't ask me what I would do. You just asked me my perspective on it.
Mike, uh, Mike Grace.
Yes.
If I'm, forgive me if I'm wrong here, but we have talked about this being a TIF six area and the TIF, TIF finance financing could be a part of the financing mechanism for this, just as much as we are also recouping costs from the West Side Interceptor, which was installed.
Correct.
Thirteen years ago?
Two thousand, two thousand and one.
Right, you know, and, and that's part of like when forward development comes in, that's part of their development fees is a recapture of a certain amount for those. And that's something I think we would evaluate as we move forward.
Yeah, Jim, Jim Mann, oh, sorry.
But I think that's kind of what you were asking, Jeff, in, in your second question, wasn't it? As far as like.
Well, yeah.
Okay, how do we pay for this and, and do we get money back?
Yeah, I get the strike while the iron's hot.
Yeah.
And I agree, you know, money's cheap and we need to be thinking about fifteen, twenty years down the road. But, you know, you bring up another good point, which is that how many units are we going to be adding between forward development and Hoffer?
I, I do want to caution you, Jeff. This, we're not doing this tomorrow. I mean, thi- this is a long period of planning. The property has to get annexed. We have to work with the property owners. We have to go to CARP see. Been at least three to four years before something would happen.
So, so we're not looking to write a two million dollar check?
No, no. And, and as I say, one thing when Jim Mann talks about borrowing for a municipal project or park or something like that, he always, he always makes a, a difference between that and borrowing for economic development because this, in theory, if you run the TIF analysis, is hopefully going to show that there's a payback, there's, there's, there's increment coming back helping to pay for the debt service. Where you borrow for the library, the debt service, that, you're, you're, that's hitting the levy. So to me, I, I look at it a little bit different. I'm not, I'm not discounting what you're saying because borrowing is borrowing, but hopefully you do this in a smart way where you're getting some payback from the development that'll pay for the debt service.
Yeah, so what this is helping me do is it's helping me prioritize in my mind what, what's a today problem or what's a tomorrow problem, this conversation.
Yeah.
So I appreciate those ads because it helps a little bit, but I still am looking at, you know, one point four million dollars or one point two million dollars. And while you say it's over time, I, I kind of, I'm getting a message that this is a today thing in terms of we need to, we need to be thinking about doing this now because the window might close. But now I'm hearing you say, but we're not going to have to write the check today. This payment will be over time.
Well, I'm, what I'm seeing is development's not going to, if you vote tonight to do this, development's not going to happen tomorrow. There's, there's a long planning period of, and more engineering and things like that that has to happen. The thing I would be looking at is, is right now, you look at our business park, which is owned by, by Licon, there's probably maybe fifteen acres left of that, in that park. I mean, once that is taken up, we will have no space to offer people to expand in the village.
Yeah.
And we're one of the rare developing communities, I don't know if Mike agrees with this, in Dane County, where we have not spent a lot of money fronting business park expansion. You know, Verona does that and Sun Prairie, we, we haven't done that. When we did the business park with Licon, they basically fronted the, the park for us. And so we've never really done this, which is a little unusual, but I, I think for the future of the village, we have to really look at doing something. Otherwise, we will, we will definitely run out of, run out of space for, for new development to come into the village.
So when you look at the capital improvement plan and the senior center, the village administrative offices and the library being the next three big projects.
Yep.
Do you see this project feathering in over time?
Yes. Yeah, and I think.
Without disrupting either of the other three projects or causing us to have to underbuild or?
I will, I will say that I would, I would proceed, if I was going to do it, I'd proceed with the planning process, Jeff, and get to the point where that, that board that's sitting here in how many years, a couple of years, three years, has to make a decision to borrow? You're, you're, you're making that decision at that point. Doesn't mean you have to do it, you can hold back and do it. Again, hopefully with the TIF being created and some contribution from the developers, there'd be like Jeff was talking about some kind of payback on it. But I, I just feel that we, we keep waiting, we've had this conversation since I've been here, the concern about the county zoning happening in that side of the highway, it's going to be harder and harder to develop the property over there. It's, it's one of our doorways to the, you know, entrances to the village that I think, which I think we need to protect.
So what I'm hearing is we just want to assemble costs for the time being?
I, I would, I would keep planning. I, I think with the lift station option, it gives us the ability. I think the 2014 TIF analysis that Vandalwell did is going to be, is going to look positive.
Okay.
I, I think it is. And that's because I, because that was the problem is we, that's why we pulled back on it because with, with the interceptor, we just couldn't make a cash flow.
Too expensive, yeah. So we haven't been approached by any of the landowners on the east side?
Well, we, we have and, and I did, I talked to Mr. Bob Sweeney Jr. today, who owns a lot of the property on that side, and Tom Smith sitting in the audience is, is his consultant. And they're, they're excited. They, they, he thanked me for the study and encouraged us to keep moving ahead with the, with the analysis.
So it may be possible then to find another Licon situation where they might own the land and, and.
Well, I will tell you that when the, the last time we did this in the village board's position was that the developers had to front the entire.
Yep.
You remember that, Jerry?
I do.
They said, Tom did analysis and, and it didn't, didn't work. So I think there's going to have to be a, a co-sharing of the costs, in my opinion.
Co-sharing is better than the village paying the whole thing. So, okay. I understand what the.
You know, a good, a good example or, or, yeah, I guess, or comparison is what the village went through before we did the West Side Interceptor. And I wasn't here when most of that happened, but they, the village spent years doing a West Side master plan and, I mean, you can remember that it probably took maybe ten years before that whole project came together. So this, this is a big deal and, and all I'm saying is I think we should start planning it, that's at least do that.
I think so.
And just makes a great point, you know, or, or maybe I said it in response, to that, that board who's sitting here gets to that point to, to borrow the money, you can then decide, well, I'm not going to do that because we're going to build something instead. But at least you've had done the planning and see if it's worthwhile.
Yeah, there's, there's a blueprint in place.
Exactly, right.
We just update the costs to the current.
Yep.
Economic conditions.
If we had never, Mike did the southeast quadrant plan back in two thousand one, two thousand and one. If we didn't have that in place, we'd be, really be trying to figure this out. So I think it's more planning would be a good idea.
Judy.
I have a question for Mike on the acreage. So in option one, in phase one, there was three hundred and seventy-nine acres and option two, one thousand and fifty-six. Are those all actual developable acres or are wetlands included in those? Like, what's the developable acre, acreage?
I think that's my question.
Sorry.
So, right, so when we looked at those acres, those were net acres. Those were, or gross acres, those were not net acres. And we did take out, the majority of the impacts would be in this phase one, so the three seventy-nine went down to one eighty-six. That's where the majority of the floodplain and wetland issues reside are in this kind of corridor that you see in that pink hatched area. The other thing I just want to note is if we're looking at that table, table four in the report that has the cost, you know, the cost from point A to point B, it's not the cost to serve all the phases for the gravity sewer. It, it kind of appears that way in the table, but what we're, what we're trying to say here is the service area, once the gravity sewer is in, can serve it all because we don't have to upgrade it or change the lift station or do something like that. So just note that, just for a point of clarification, that, that gravity sewer, that initial cost is comparing apples to apples. All these costs are for serving from point A to point B.
So my, my concern with those, that acreage, is that, is that enough acres to make it all worthwhile? Or, or do we mitigate wet, wetlands or what, do we have a plan?
Under the, under the previous analysis, we were approaching break even as we got down to about that hill road.
Yeah.
Level going south. You can see on the colored map up here that there's development potential in terms of what comes back to our treatment plant by, by gravity once we get across Highway fourteen all the way to County A. And in addition to that, we've got the large area of town subdivisions that's centered on MM going south, going over to the Highway fourteen.
Fayette.
Yeah, Fayette, Fayette, et cetera. My experience in southern Wisconsin is that somewhere between forty and, and eighty years old, a lot of those systems have failed.
So those are, those are wells?
Septic and well. I'm not saying that this will happen at that rate or that all of the lots, all of the homes will have trouble, but that's certainly been my experience in seeing that. So the other thing that this investment does is it would enable the possibility, if needed, of retrofitting public water and, and sanitary sewer into those areas as well. I've worked for a number of cities lately that have had similar subdivisions nearby and they've chosen to extend those services without requiring annexation. It's interesting, when I was first practicing in Wisconsin, cities and villages would always require annexation in these instances, but I've seen a movement where in as many cases or not, annexation is not required. The important thing is potable water and a, and a viable way to get rid of it is provided to those subdivisions. It keeps the property values in those areas high and the homes in good shape and they remain viable neighborhood. So in my mind, in kind of the, thinking about the potential to, for the greater good for the larger Oregon community, having the ability to provide that service when it's needed in the future is something good for, for everyone.
Yes, I, I would say, I really agree with what, what Mike said about planning for this. This is, I've been on the board fifteen years and it's been here off and on during all those times. And for one reason or another, we chose not to proceed with it. But, and I met with Mike in Madison several years ago and talked about this area and he said, again, like Mike Grace said, that this is a major entrance and it will become more major with the hotel over there, I think. And the county zoning is pretty broad. You don't know what's going to end up over there. So if we would start planning for this and get the wheels in motion, I think we're making a real wise investment in the future of the village.
And as I say, a lot of the, a lot of the work really will not happen until we have the staff planner on board. This is, this is a large project.
Yeah.
And, and so we would do some preliminary work this year, but if the board would likely agrees with hiring a planner, this would be one of their, his or her main projects is to then take this and, and get this through the process with Mike's help, honestly.
Mike, what are the costs associated with these near term planning costs?
You need to do this, to do the study, update the study?
Oh, under, under a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
It's just a matter of hours.
So it's not that it's a budgeting problem then?
No, no.
Okay.
Are there other questions for Jason or Mike or Mike over here right now?
I had one question. I remember seeing a map a couple of years ago, I think it was an earlier version of the comprehensive plan for the village that showed development east of fourteen, I think all the way up to Rottland Dunn Town Road. Was that just a speculation or what was that?
We had a, a version of the comprehensive plan done in the, the, oh, I'm going to say about two thousand and five or six, that did plan to expand the village farther east across Highway fourteen from Netherwood Road corridor south in the town of Dunn. And three things happened after that. The village president changed. The wetland mapping showed much of that area as either wetland or, or floodplain. And the town of Dunn asked us to unmap it for village growth. And, and so we did. And so now our plan, which is the, the map on the bulletin board there, took all of that land that could not be reached from Highway one thirty-eight, but instead was reached from Netherwood Road and designated it for farmland preservation.
Other questions? Okay, Jason, thanks for your report. We might come back to you. And I've heard you report twice on the last couple of weeks. They've been thorough, understandable and helpful, so I appreciate.
Thank you.
The good work that you do, yeah. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments? Some of you, like me, have been over the years a number of times in our whole board does with item, item B, but I think we have a good idea about that. Anyone? Judy? Welcome.
Thank you. Judy Knudsen, and I'm the chamber director. I just wanted, you know, we talk about the library, we talk about the senior center, we talk about this building.
Thank you, Judy Knudsen, and I'm the chamber director. I just wanna, you know, we talk about the library, we talk about the senior center, we talk about this building here, but we need to have tax money, you guys. And that's what it is with having businesses in town. We need a business park. So, I mean, we, I have people calling all the time, asking if we have land available. So it'd be nice if we had a business park. So when you vote, that's something, I mean, if we want tax money, that's where it's gonna come from. So, thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Okay, that takes us to item four B. Possible board direction, authorize Vanderwall to update their two thousand fourteen sample increment calculation from new development analysis for the board's review.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And again, these costs are something that are easily absorbed by our budget, current budget.
When we were preparing the eighteen budget, I anticipated the board, you know, considering this, so that I, I put some extra money in the budget for planning.
All right.
So any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have motion second to authorize Vanderwall to update their two thousand fourteen sample increment calculation from new development analysis for board's review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I see some heads nodding out there, so that's good, some smiles. So we will proceed. Like Mike said, it takes quite a while, but this starts getting the planning in place to move. Okay. Thank you, thanks, Jason. Good, item C, discussion including workforce slash affordable housing as part of future developments.
I put this on the agenda, as I knew Mike was gonna be here. And Mike, I've, I've been, we've been talking about trying to find, you know, a place for affordable workforce housing, and it's harder to do, to retrofit, you know, now. And I'm thinking as we cross, if we cross, excuse me, you know, that we would, you know, keep our eye on the prize, trying to identify sites for it over there.
Right, so typically, that workforce housing, under current development practices, tends to be multifamily apartment development. And in our comprehensive plan, we allow a relatively small percentage of the dwelling units in those yellow crosshatched areas to be multifamily. And sometimes developers include a low percentage of workforce housing in their multifamily projects. So between five and, and ten to fifteen percent is what I've seen. But what we do find typically is the cost to build a workforce housing unit is, when you're integrating it with market rate units, it's the same amount of money to build the workforce unit. And so, we don't get a lot of units that way typically. So then what you would tend to look for are areas that could be developed with multifamily housing that would tend not to disrupt existing neighborhoods. And we don't have any vacant parcels in the village right now that would accomplish that. One thing that does work is to put workforce housing above or next to employment, whether it's industrial or commercial development. So one potential advantage of going across Highway fourteen is it would provide a, a potential place where we wouldn't disrupt existing neighborhoods. It's largely rural and undeveloped there. And we could get it where, where literally residents could walk to their place of work and use taxis or Uber to, to get around when they needed to. The average cost of home, of car ownership right now for an average car is nine thousand dollars a year. And we, we tend not to think about that when, except when we're buying a, a car. But if you can eliminate the need for car ownership, particularly by making it possible to, to walk or bike to work, that's the number one thing a community can do. So that's, that's the trend that we're seeing now, is typically this workforce housing is the whole building.
And I actually thought it'd be kind of an interesting, possible incentive for somebody who wants to locate to this property, or, you know, somewhere in here, saying you have nearby employees. You know, that is gonna be the future, is trying to find employees for your businesses.
The other thing to let you know about is, the state legislature just passed Act sixty-seven, which actually prohibits us from requiring that workforce housing be integrated into market rate housing projects. That was a prohibition built right into the statute. And so, the way we provide workforce housing now is by asking people to do it in small increments and by enabling perhaps them to do it when it's a larger project located away from the existing neighborhood.
If we are talking about putting affordable housing on the other side of fourteen, how, like, how would that look as far as, especially if we're structuring it so that they don't have to have vehicles? Getting to main areas of service on this side of fourteen, would we have to then do some sort of like footbridge underneath, or how, how does that work?
Well, there are good pedestrian connections built into the interchange design. And using our planning and official mapping powers, we can ensure that any development around the village, or infill sites within the village, can provide bike and pedestrian facilities. We're about to bring the new park and open space plan to the board in the next few months, and it includes a good number of recommendations for finishing the bike and pedestrian network within the developed parts of the community. And I think we're, we're very well poised to have a strong enough network to get kids to school and, and folks to the downtown to where more of our facilities are located. So I'm very hopeful about, you know, the compact size of the village and, and the way that so many facilities are clustered around the downtown. I, I think we have a community that would work if you wanted to live without a car.
Other questions, Jerry?
Is there a possibility of including affordable senior housing as part of future developments?
Well, it's, it's proposed to do that as part of the, you know, once the library and senior center building gets knocked down. On, on that block, you know, it's been, excuse me, Mike's idea to that we would, the village would sell that, that block to a developer who would put up a shell of the senior center, senior housing, and in there, we would, we would, we would require there be affordable senior housing in, in that building.
Because I know going forward, the demand for senior housing is gonna explode. Has already.
Yep.
I know in Rolling Meadows, I think they have a waiting list of fifty to sixty names.
Yeah.
And they quit taking names, so...
I, I think senior and workforce housing above commercial office retail development in a two, three, four-story format will likely be how big portions of North Bane Street and Market Street, and portions of Janesville Street evolve over time. Would it be surprising to me if most of the development along Jefferson Street, where we have the neighborhood shopping area identified, it isn't mixed-use housing like that? Because you're right, the, the wave is here, and it's gonna go for another thirty years. And, you know, the, the millennial generation now, the last couple of years, there were more kids born than at the peak of the baby boom. So, you know, it's, that demand is with us to, to stay.
Other questions at this time? There is a, a group in town forming kind of an offshoot of the Friends of Oregon School District to start talking about this type of housing also. I would imagine it'll be before us at some point in time. They're gonna start, I think, talking with Olivia Perry from Dane County. This is what she works on, to get that process started.
I've got one quick anecdote. We built an affordable housing project next to Lombardino's on Old University Avenue. We expected that it would be primarily filled with graduate students. It was almost completely filled with workers at the Veterans Hospital and the university clinics. And, and there's a waiting list to get in there. And, and so that's happening, I think, you know, just everywhere.
Yeah.
And so, it's great that it's in conjunction with the school district, because they're the largest employer in the community.
Administrators of the school have told this group, when the Friends of Oregon School District asked, what do you most need? They said, we need affordable housing for some of our families that go to school here. The number of homeless students has gone up significantly the last ten years.
Well, and some of the school workers, I would, I would imagine.
Yeah. Steve, there's a comment, yeah. Yeah, you'll have to go to Mike, Commander. Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Peterson, live in the Village of Oregon on three oh one South Main. I'm wondering, I'm glad to hear this discussion about affordable housing. I'm wondering if anybody remembers when the last time Madison Metro or had thought about... Our town is walkable and bikeable, but not when it's twenty-five below. And, you know, when we're thinking... A shuttle of some sort to at least get seniors to the library, to... Decide to do that as a community, or maybe just, I don't remember how long ago we talked about that, so...
I think that's... But if, we would have to subsidize about thirty thousand dollars a year. And you'll see when you get on board that it's hard to fit that into a budget with the needs we have, so...
Sure, I just didn't know if that would have changed now, we've grown some...
With the rideshare program.
Yeah.
And the, forgive me here, the park and ride, proposed park and ride law, which would be at the northern entrance. Off.
That's right, good point.
Stuff here.
Good, okay. Good, item five, discussion possible action regarding the DOT clarification. Janesville Street and east Village boundary. The recommended motion is to approve jurisdictional ownership by the Village of Oregon of the portion of Janesville Street from Park Street east to the east Village boundary as depicted on Exhibit A of Department Transportation Project five five six seven dash zero zero dash seven two.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Are there any costs associated with doing this?
No, this is a cleanup item. When, when those roundabouts and everything went in, there were documents that were drafted that were, took care of what, what was maintained and what wasn't. There was, this is just kind of a small cleanup item that takes care of. If you look on the, the sheet, the map, and I've kind of labeled it Village of Oregon, which is basically from Park Street to our eastern boundary at the sign there. It just says that we will take, take care of maintenance of that section of roadway, so that's no removal. The road's basically fairly new, so it's, we're getting it in a new state. I confirm with Dane County, it's really been ours all along. It's just a cleanup item to get it on paperwork.
But Jeff, with this, we'll get this counted towards our...
Right, yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll get the, the road mileage will be added to us and taken off the county, so that our funding, it's gonna be very small, obviously, but our funding goes up, counties goes down, because we're cleaning that up on the books.
Thanks, Mike, that was my next question.
Anything else? We have that motion to...
They've asked, and I should just be public about this, they have asked if we could date this, the thirty-first, to keep it in last year's. I don't know if that's a problem or not, but...
Can we do that, Mike?
That's a great question, I don't know.
I don't believe that's possible, but I'll leave it to staff to sort that out.
Why, why is that?
It's dealing with the last year's funding and this year's funding and everything like that. I mean, I think it's, it's something we've been doing for, we've been actually maintaining it.
Yeah. Let me, let me, I can talk to Matt about that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Anything else? So we have motion second to approve the jurisdictional ownership by the Village of Oregon of the portion of Janesville Street from Park Street east, the east Village boundary as depicted on Exhibit A of DOT Project five five six seven dash zero zero dash seven two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six would be a motion for adjournment, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.